Kids picked up freebies from t-shirts to balloon animals, but they also learned that the community cares about them and their future.
They just want to pick up stuff for me and part of the community.
A salute to kids that begins with the march and ends with families and the community making a commitment to a safer and healthier future for the next generation. An antique car show and parade honoring public safety officers recently rolled into action. Anita Bennett takes us to the annual 10-4 Day in Hollywood. With music from the 1970's TV show Chips and some hot wheels from crime dramas including Kit, The Talking Trans Am, and Knight Rider, a car show and parade honoring public safety officers kicked off at the LA Fire Department Museum in Hollywood.
This is 10-4 Day, October 4th, but we celebrate traffic safety, we celebrate television and movie, police shows. Larry Wilcox is here from Chips.
Then the parade snaked its way up the street to the world famous Walk of Fame.
Everybody loves this. All the cars, people come out, they have a lot of fun. We get great support from everybody.
The tourists got a kick out of the old police cars and meeting someone who played a highway patrol officer on TV.
Well, here he is. He's been had his picture taken with a lot of fans from Chips. Ladies and gentlemen, let's hear it for Larry Wilcox.
On behalf of Broderick Crawford and of course, the CHP and the California Highway Patrol and 1199 Fund and all the policemen that have given their lives in the line of duty, God bless them, have a great day.
It was also a chance for a local beauty queen and a costume Catwoman to say thanks to LA's public safety officers. Along Hollywood Boulevard, I'm Anita Bennett for LA This Week. In this week's list of things to do and exhibit honoring the dead, a coral extravaganza at the Disney Concert Hall and all about planting and growing tea roses. If you love roses and gardening, then join Gloria Lenbach, president of the South Coast Rose Society, as she educates attendees at the Banning Museum on how to select, grow, and plant tea roses successfully in Southern California gardens. The free lecture takes place Saturday, October 20th at 10:00 AM at the Banning Museum, located at 401 East M Street in Wilmington. The museum's Howard Rose Garden is a bloom with 12 historic tea roses that you won't want to miss. Light refreshments will be served. To RSVP, call 310-548-2005. The website is thebanningmuseum.org. It's a celebration for departed loved ones, otherwise known as Dia de los Muertos, the Day of the Dead. Celebrations will kick off next week, but the art exhibit Sacred Memories, honoring the dead across cultures, will be on display at the Pico House, starting Friday, October 19th, and will continue through mid-November. The Pico House is located at 424 North Main Street at the El Pueblo Historical Monument downtown, across from the Union Station. Call 213-485-8437 for more information. The Los Angeles Master Corral opens its 49th season on Sunday, October 21st at 7:00 PM at the Walt Disney Concert Hall with an organ and choral extravaganza led by music director Grant Gershon. Welsh composer Paul Meiler will participate in a pre-concert talk to discuss the wedding anthem he composed for Prince William and Kate Middleton's royal wedding, an anthem heard by 2.5 billion people around the world. The Los Angeles Children's Chorus will cap off the evening with a post-concert gala performance. The Walt Disney Concert Hall is located at 111 South Grand Avenue downtown. For ticket information, go to lamc.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do. The act of play may seem, well, like child's play, but one little boy proves it's much more. He turned his love for arcade games into a thriving business that's getting worldwide attention, and he built it using the only things he had: scraps and cardboard boxes and a whole lot of imagination. Gil Reyes takes us to Kane's Arcade.
Business is booming on a Saturday afternoon. Kids spend their tokens playing miniature soccer and other fun titles you might find at the local Chuck E. Cheese. One difference, though: these games are not electronic. But who needs Xbox when you have a cardboard box?
Hi. Welcome to the arcade.
Welcome to Kane's Arcade, the brainchild of 10-year-old Kane Munroy. He took cardboard, yarn, and other scraps from his dad's struggling auto parts store and turned them into an electric free arcade, setting up shop in dad's workspace.
Little by little, he just started making different games and more games, and they started getting more complicated. And then he met a guy who made a short film about it, and since then, the film has gone viral and turned Kane into a worldwide celebrity.
The short film titled Kane's Arcade has received millions of hits since its online release last year. Money to help Kane began pouring in from all over the world.
Kane has now raised over $218,000 in donations to go to solid.
The film documents his determination, something LA city leaders respected.
He was there for a year, building on his little dream, and nobody came. And that didn't matter. He kept on building his dream. And that's, I think, what we celebrate as well. He went back to the basics about what's possible, and it shows that you do the best with what you have. That is a strong message to give everyone in life.
Just believe in yourself.
Smart advice in the game of life. In Boyle Heights, Gil Reyes for LA This Week.
The mayor and councilman Weezer were at Kane's Arcade to help celebrate the Imagination Foundation's Global Day of Play. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. You can catch us also online at lacityview.org or follow us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of LA This Week.
G'day. Troy McCavlin from North Hollywood. You're watching LA City View, Channel 35, our city, our channel.
Sargent, sargent, please call, please call the members so that we can start today's council meeting. I do want to thank Mr. Buscaino, Mr. Englander, Mr. Labange, Ms. Perry, Mr. Reyes for being here on time. I also want to note that Mitch Englander and Guy from Garcetti's office are not dressed appropriately for council, so you may be banned from today's meeting. And the goalie from the 12th district, Mitchell Englander. Sargent, give me some more members so we can get started. Ms. Perry has her jersey on as well. And I want to commend, we've got a young man out back that's the first person in line that's been here since before 8 o'clock. We have in our midst today one of the greatest hockey players of all time, Luke, and we have the greatest trophy in hockey with us today. Sargent, please call the members so that we can begin today's council meeting. Hey, Betsy, do you think I could get a picture with us before we get started? Sargent, I need some members. Do I have ETAs? Johnson? Again, I want to thank Mr. Buscaino, Englander, Garcetti, Labange, Perry, Reyes. Good morning. Today is Friday, October 19th. I want to welcome all of you to your Los Angeles City Council chambers. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at approximately 10:00 AM. I want to take a moment to thank the members that are here today. Again, that's Mr. Alacon Buscaino, Englander, Garcetti, Coretts, Labange, Perry, Reyes, and of course, myself. We're gonna, we do not have a quorum. Oh, we just, we just got a quorum. So why don't we get started? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alacon Buscaino, Cardenas, Englander, Garcetti, Weezer, Coretts, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosen, Alzine, Wesson, Timmer is present, and a quorum, Mr. President.
First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Perry moves. Zine seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Garcetti moves. Englander seconds, next.
Items 1 through 5 are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, items 1 through 5. Members, any specials? Specials? Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item.
Excuse me, Mr. President. For items 3, 4, and 5, the report has not been circulated yet. Do you wish to hold that on the desk?
Okay, on those items, we will hold them on the desk on the remaining. Mr. Englander.
Items special on 2 and 3, please.
2 and 3, special by Mr. Englander. Okay, whatever's left, let's prepare to vote on it. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Next section.
Items 6 through 19 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes required for consideration.
Without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have any cards?
Cards on items 6, 8, 10, 14, and 16.
Okay, we'll hold those items. Members, specials on the remaining items? Mr. Englander.
7, please.
Okay, I think Mr. Englander is telling us we might have a busy day today. Okay, item 7 for Mr. Englander. Mr. Zine, 19 for Mr. Zine. Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
Okay, where does that bring us?
Takes council to presentations or items called special.
Okay, we have a very special guest that's with us today, and I'm going to ask Ms. Perry if she would introduce this special guest to us. Ms. Perry, the floor belongs to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, it's a pleasure to welcome hockey legend Luke Robitaille. Give him a big hand. And of course, the guardian of the cup who is not going to leave his post. He's sitting here in the front row, and his name is Mike Bolt, who has brought the Stanley Cup to our chambers today. Let's give him a big hand. I want to say a few words about the cup so that you know what some of the special words mean. Luke's name is on the cup twice. Once as a player, now as a member of the King's family. Only Luke and Mike can pick up the cup because their names are on it. So I might want to repeat that. Only Luke and Mike can pick up the cup because their names are on it. Now, unlike the trophies awarded by the other three major professional sports leagues of North America, a new Stanley Cup is not made each year. Winners keep it until a new champion is crowned. It is unusual among trophies in that it has the names of all the winning players, coaches, management, and club staff engraved on its chalice. The original bowl was made of silver and is 18.5 centimeters, or that's 7.28 inches, in height, and 29 centimeters, or 11.42 inches, in diameter. The current Stanley Cup topped with a copy of the original bowl is made of silver and nickel alloy. Since the 1914-15 season, the cup has been won a combined 94 times by 18 active National Hockey League teams and five defunct teams. Prior to that, the Challenge Cup was held by nine different teams. This cup has traveled throughout the nation and Canada, and it's really an honor to host it here today. And it's especially meaningful to have it here in Los Angeles and to our hometown team, the Los Angeles Kings, because they won the cup this season, making us all very proud. But this wasn't, give them a big hand on that. I want to show you a photograph of the last time the cup visited City Hall, and that was in 2002. Let me see if I can hold this up with a camera. If you could zoom in on it. There's some of the current and former council members are in this picture. It's 2002. Hal Berenson is there, former Mayor Hahn, and some of the folks who are still here. Anyway, so we've been blessed twice. It brings back a lot of good memories. I'm proud to host the cup today, and I want to thank Luke for standing here with all of us, and I look forward to taking another group photo with the cup today. Now, every player gets to have it for a day. So this summer, the cup visited Slovenia, Russia, and all over North America. The King's coach has a horse. The horse actually ate out of the cup. So I look forward to us sharing this moment again so that we can have, I'm going to hold this picture up when we take one of the pictures. And I want to say congratulations, Luke, and to the King's family, the coach, and most of all, thank you to the fans. And I have to say one word about the fans because I pay a lot of attention since I represent the area. I'll tell you, the King's fans are some of the most decent family people you'd ever find. The most interesting thing about the King's fans, if you go to a King's game, you can see them streaming down Figueroa because they've taken public transportation where they're coming off of Flower and 11th, because they come in families and groups, and they take public transportation, and they walk to LA Live, and they have a good, great time there, and I appreciate that. They're decent, they're supportive, they're consistent, and they love their team, and that's what makes Los Angeles great. So Luke, if you'd say a few words.
Now, I've got some, before Luke speaks, I've got, at least at this time, a couple of members on the queue. And I want to remind members that several years ago, we honored Luke, and we happened to honor him on a day that was a pet adoption day. And he's the individual that adopted our dog, which was a beautiful dog, trained and what have you. So he's a dog lover, so he's okay with me. I do want to say that many, several of the members here were with you, Luke, at the celebration that we had at the arena. Ms. Perry was there and was afforded the opportunity to speak. Mr. Labange stopped by. Mr. Reyes was there. Mitch was there with his jersey on, probably the second time he's ever worn it. Mr. Buscaino was there. Mr. Zine was there, and I had the honor to be there. It was a very exciting day for us. It was the day that not only was LA the city of champions, we were a city of kings. With that said, Mr. Englander.
Yes, thank you. I'm a huge, huge fan, as you know, Luke, but I got to tell a story real quick, if you could allow me. What got me into hockey, actually, and I became such a large fan and a huge fan, was actually an embarrassing moment years ago, when I was playing golf, and I was playing in a foursome with a guy by the name of Luke Robitaille. And we're on the third hole, and I said, "So Luke, what do you do for a living?" And he looked at me and he goes, "You're kidding, right?" And I said, "No." And what kind of name is Luke? I mean, the only time I've ever heard Luke was in Star Wars. And we actually hit it off really, really well. In fact, he invited me to the next game. And then, that night, he invited me and my family to hear his son sing for the players for the first time, and he's fantastic, and Stassi was great. And I became a huge fan. And in fact, last season, I don't think I missed a game. And what you've done for not just the league and not just for LA, I mean, as the all-time highest left-winger scoring champion, Hall of Famer, that you are truly, yeah, that deserves applause. Truly an icon here in our city. But what you've done for the Kings and what you've done to put us on the map and bring home the cup is just incredible, and I am a huge fan. My hat's off to you. You've just done just a phenomenal job. It's such a great moment to have the cup here. I also want to give a shout out to Martha and Michael as well for everything that they do, not just for hockey and AEG and the Kings and Staples Center in LA, but they're everywhere doing everything for everyone. Thank you so much, Jan. Thanks for putting this together. This is awesome for Los Angeles. Thank you to Luke Robitaille. I'll see you on the golf course.
Mr. Labange.
That was a great day in LA, the parade, the people, the fans, and as Ms. Perry spoke, it is nice. Luke, I'm surprised Mitch still has his teeth after he asked you that question on the golf course. I don't know what he was doing, but we're so proud of you. It's so exciting when our professional teams do well and support all through the times, the challenging times, and then victory. And what a parade that it was, and especially to go to LA Live, and it brought the city together. So I just want to congratulate you. I want to get a shout out to Lord Stanley, who was the governor general in Montreal, appointed by the Queen some over 100 years ago in 1889, who liked ice hockey enough to make it the national sport of Canada. And now, when you go to Vancouver, Stanley Park, which is named after Lord Stanley, which is a sister city, which you would really like, Mr. Wesson, is a great connection. So we're so pleased that the Kings did such a great job and won the championship for all the players. And I never saw players, because Herb, you know, in your time, and Jan, your time, in the parades that we've had with the other teams, enjoy it as much as the Kings players did. And thanks to our line tours for those buses. That was the perfect way to tour them through town. Congratulations, Los Angeles Kings, Stanley Cup champions.
Mr. Alacon.
Yeah, I too want to stand and salute the Kings and Luke Robitaille.
Yeah, I too want to stand and salute the Kings and Luke Robitaille in particular. I actually had the opportunity to honor Luke Robitaille in the nineties, when I served on the City Council, and we did so because he was involved in opening an ice skating rink in Panorama City. And I want to tell you that just this Saturday, I was driving behind that ice skating rink, and there were thirty kids doing lunges behind the building as preparation for their team's ice skating program. So, I want to thank you for not just being a player and not just being involved with a team that is clearly not only champions, but really has become a part of Los Angeles. But the way that you have become part of Los Angeles is by getting into the communities and encouraging kids to get involved in organized sports. And believe me, Panorama City and the surrounding communities certainly need it. There's no question. It's a tough community. Hockey's a tough sport. They blend well together, and I believe that many, many more champions are going to emerge out of the urban core of Los Angeles, where it's often a hundred degrees and above, who are going to be championship hockey players because of your efforts and the efforts of the Kings. So, congratulations on all your accomplishments. I can't believe Mitch would admit on Channel Thirty-five that he didn't know who you were. And then, he turns around and says he's a huge fan. I don't understand. There's certain irony about that, but he certainly has become a huge fan. Congratulations and continued success. Let's win the championship next year also.
Mr. Alakon, you've served with us long enough to know that Mr. Englander, Mr. Labonge, Mr. Zine, and myself will say anything. So, nothing surprises me when it comes from us. Mr. Reyes, who again was there that day.
It was an amazing day. It's a day of great pride. I'm gonna thank the Kings and everyone responsible for making that happen. And Mr. LeWicki, that's one of his... What's closest to his heart, his role in bringing the Kings to their glory. I was looking at this picture, and there's like... There's four of us that remains in this picture. And at that time, we were working with developing a rink in Lincoln Heights. So, we have a skating rink, and we are teaching hockey in the middle of Lincoln Heights. So, soccer fields are tend to be the norm, baseball fields, but I was told that's the only skating rink, other than the one in Panorama City, in the city of L.A., where kids can actually develop skills and practice and learn the sport. So, I'm glad we have this tradition growing in Los Angeles. We can have future Kings, future professionals coming online in Los Angeles, and hopefully we build more recreation facilities for the kids in our city. So, again, thank you for everything you've done, everything the Kings has done, and for inspiring our children to be more active in sports. Thank you.
Mr. Buscaino.
Thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Ms. Perry, for bringing the cup to the John Ferraro City Council Chambers. I just want to offer my congratulations to the team, the championship Los Angeles Kings. They have inspired a nation. They've inspired the city. They played with just character, compassion, and just a huge commitment to this great sport of hockey. And they've also inspired a lot of young people throughout this city and throughout this nation. And I just want to echo what Mr. Reyes said, where we had an opportunity to do some great work in Watts at a local elementary school and partner with the AEG family. But to you, Luke, you are an amazing spokesperson for the Los Angeles Kings. Your character as well and your commitment to this great city, we thank you. We honor you, and thanks to the AEG family. And I hope and pray that one day, we'll see the Vince Lombardi Trophy at this table here in City Council. So, thank you, congratulations, and thanks again, Ms. Perry, for bringing the cup to the City Council Chambers.
Mr. Zine.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jan Perry, thank you once again for bringing stars to the City Council Chambers. Luke Robitaille, that name, Luke Robitaille. Hearing that at the Staples Center, but just think that we had a huge parade, and I was honored to ride in that parade. And then, we have the Lakers Parade, and then, we had the Endeavor Parade down Los Angeles. It's only in this unique area of the world where we can have a star with the hockey, star with basketball, and then land a spaceship here into Jan Perry's district, all happening in the great nine districts. I just want to acknowledge, congratulate you, riding in that parade and seeing all the fans and the exuberance of what the Kings have done for Los Angeles, which AEG has done for Los Angeles. And then, to top it off, and you start adding them all together, these magnificent parades, and then the most recent that finds the final resting place in Jan Perry's district. And the Stanley Cup then goes back to guard, obviously. It'll be here, hopefully, for more than a year, but a great opportunity for people to come up and look at it and see it, and it's just absolutely spectacular. It's got a full-time man who I'm sure you're armed and dangerous to protect, to make sure that it doesn't disappear, because that would really be a tragedy. But again, Jan, thank you for this. Luke, thank you for coming to Council Chambers and honoring your presence here and what all you do with the team to help inspire all those folks here in the city of the Angels. God bless you, and thank you very much.
Mr. Zine, was I in an alternate universe or a coma? Did the Lakers win the championship? Did I just miss it?
I'm not talking about this most. I'm talking about the history and how the history... The Lakers' history, the Kings' history, and then the Endeavor. Trying to link these together, but Lakers did not win this last one.
I got it. I got it. Now that you put it in context, thank you, Mr. Zine. Ms. Perry, you can now turn it over to Luke. Ladies and gentlemen, let's give him a round of applause. Put together a Stanley Cup-winning team.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I mean, it was very important on behalf of the L.A. Kings, Team LeWicki, AEG, that we brought the cup here. Everyone's made a big difference in the history of the Los Angeles Kings. I mean, the fact that we're playing at Staples Center, one of the greatest arenas in North America, is truly has been a lot of fun for all the players. And, Mr. President, I just want you to know, the dog is still with me. I did promise my wife today that I wouldn't bring any new member of the family when I was coming here. Took a hike with him this morning, so it was a lot of fun. Mitch, I actually thought that... It's because you thought I was such a great golfer that you didn't know I was a hockey player, but now I realize I had nothing to do with that, so I'm a little... It's been a rough day, but, you know, all in all, for us, the L.A. Kings, what it meant for us to win the Stanley Cup the first time in forty-five years. I mean, it's been truly a great example of team spirit and having a whole team together. We didn't have one individual that was just kind of stood out that wanted to be a star. And what made it very special, I think, for the whole city of L.A. is to see a team that would come out and play as one unit and have success. And you could clearly tell that everyone in Los Angeles kind of saw that and really embraced that feeling. And, you know, it was certainly something very special that we cherish, and it's been fun this summer to take the Stanley Cup all around town. I mean, even though it's been around the world, we've... Anytime we've had an opportunity, we want to make sure our fans and the people of the great city of L.A. can see the Stanley Cup. So, it's truly been great. It is a hundred and twenty years old. It is the greatest trophy in sport. You know, I'm glad that everyone in here today will be able to take a picture with it and enjoy it. Whether you're a hockey fan or not, it is a great trophy, and that's what makes it so special. And, you know, just to finish, I want to say that the fact that we got our names on it, it makes it very special. But for me, I came here in nineteen eighty-six, and I love this city. We've never moved. My wife is from here. My kids are Angelinos. We love this town. And the fact that the name Los Angeles is inscribed on the Stanley Cup, and will be there forever, for anyone that goes to the Hall of Fame for the next hundreds of years, they will see the name Los Angeles is on that Stanley Cup. I think that's very, very special, and hopefully, we could put it again next year. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Ms. Perry, I understand you might have a special request for us?
Yes. My request is that all colleagues join us in the middle, so we can all take a picture with Mr. Robitaille and Mr. Bolt, if you would join us too.
Wonderful. Okay, members, if you could proceed to the middle of the horseshoe.
Yeah, get in the window, guys. Yeah, Councilman Zine can't see his face.
I'm gonna go around. We can't see Zine's face. Wait, you're gonna have to move over. Sorry. And Sherry, sorry. Let me just get a couple. Oh, there you go. Okay, buddy. Very nice. There you go. You're right my shot. Wait, right here. You got your camera in my shot. Very nice, everybody, right here, for one. Big smile. Councilman Garcetti, you're just about... I don't know, but he looks good with it. Wait, I can't see you. All right. All right. Looks good. Thank you.
Again, let's give it up for our Kings, the Stanley Cup, Luke Robitaille, and all of the players. Thank you. Ms. Perry has another presentation, and at this point in time, I'd like to turn the floor or return the floor to Ms. Perry.
Okay. I have to locate my staff with my notes for the next presentation.
Ms. Perry's staff?
Just give me...
You want to just wait a minute or two, and then...
Yeah. Yeah, I seem to have stepped in the back for a second. Yeah, give me a minute.
Okay, item ten. We have one card on item ten. So, Madam Clerk, we'll go to item ten, and that's John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, and for identification purposes only, Chairman of anybody but Garcetti for mayor. And incidentally, those hockey players, they're on strike. We support them. I ask you, why don't you support them by passing a resolution to support them? On item ten, come to HollywoodHighlands.org for all the information. This concerns the Walk of Fame. It is falling apart. It is cracking. It is not kept up. Anybody who goes there will see that it is shocking. And at the Walk of Fame, just a hundred feet from the Walk of Fame, straight down, a woman was killed on the escalator on Tuesday, and the story was covered up. Wait for my next public comment. HollywoodHighlands.org, go to it now.
Thank you. Okay, there are no speakers on the queue for this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now, let's go to item number eight. Mr. Walsh. Okay, he passes on item number eight. Let's prepare to vote on this. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
This is concerns the Community Redevelopment Agency. I went to my first CRA meeting in nineteen seventy-two, over forty years ago, and watched them take in Berkeley a black family's home in an industrial area. And I said then, "I will live to see the day. I will destroy this agency. I will work my entire life to destroy this agency." And we did destroy this agency. And it's not coming back. And all these little tricks you have, Jerry Brown has done what we asked him to do. He has done a fantastic job. And I'm sure that Barack Obama lived here, he would say the same thing. Barack Obama on my T-shirt. The CRA can't redevelop anything. They are racist. They are swines. We have defeated them. They don't exist anymore. They cannot take my prop... The owner of the office building, the building I live in, they can't take it away from him.
Thank you, John Walsh. Let's prepare to vote on that item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, it's my understanding that the reports we needed on items four and five are before us. Madam City Clerk, can we take them up together?
Yes.
Okay, members, we're on items four and five. Let's open the roll. Wait, let's wait and take Mr. Krikorian off the...
Where we at?
Okay, now, we'll prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, now...
Hello?
Mr. Parks?
Can I get those separated, because I have a different vote on...
Okay, so now, what we'll do, we'll vote to reconsider those items. We're voting to reconsider items four and five. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Okay, so now, we will vote on those items separately, beginning with item four. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, one no.
Okay, now, let's vote on item five. Let's open the roll. Mr. Englander?
Item four, can you correct that? It was a yes vote, when not a no vote.
Okay, Mr. Englander was a yes vote, and we can correct that without voting again. Correct? Okay, so we will correct that. Mr. Englander will be listed as a yes on item five now. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, two no's.
Okay, now, we will move to item sixteen.
Or you can just go to Walsh Confidential. Our successful server requests, since September twenty-fifth of last year, one million, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand people have come. There are people out here, the people out here, that come to our website. This is number sixteen, and this is, as you know, this is District Fifteen. These are balances for general city purposes. I think you... I'm not going to go into all the details, but I think instead of genuflecting and acting like children in front of Luke Robitaille, we should have a discussion of this money that passes hand. But, incidentally, we love sitting here and watching your masturbatory declarations to Luke Robitaille.
No, we're not going to arrest you. You're gonna have to go outside to get arrested, Mr. Walsh. Okay, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let us open the roll. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. Now, we're gonna move, Ms. Zine, to item 19, which was held special by you, item 19. In fact, no, just take care of your business.
No, we're gonna continue that till Tuesday.
But you're only gonna continue 19A or something, right?
Well...
It's not the whole...
19A, 19A.
Okay, so we'll now vote on the remainder of item 19. We're gonna continue item 19A. We need a date, Mr. Zine?
Tuesday.
October 23rd.
Okay, so on what's left, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, now, we'll go to item two.
Item two, called by Mr. Englander.
Okay. Uh, but we can just vote on that issue. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Englander?
Fourth with, please.
Fourth with, it is, without objection. Now, we'll vote on item three. Let us open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes, two noes.
Okay, now, let's go to item seven. If we could, open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
That ordinance will be held over for one week for a second reading.
Okay, that brings us to item number six. Mr. John Wa... Mr. Lavange?
I apologize, Mr. President. I want to look at that item. I didn't want to vote no on it too, but I'll review it and I'll call for consideration. Thank you.
So, wait a minute. So, that means I have to vote to reconsider this item?
Yes.
So, you're gonna go check it out, let me know, and if you're comfortable, we'll let the action stand. All right. Number six, Mr. John Walsh, HollywoodHighland.org.
Garcetti for mayor, but reelect Barack Obama. See, they think because I have allies on the right, that I'm a rightist. No. I'm a Marxist-Leninist. And I'm the only one in this room who will say that. Although, there are other hidden Marxist-Leninists. As far as this issue is concerned, you're doing an excellent job on daycare. Put more money in it. You do good jo... When you do a good job, I say it. That's when I'm not heckled by the city attorney, Tutanich's boy. But when I praise you, I am never, never interrupted. When I criticize you, Garcetti just showed up.
Mr. Wesson, he has not talked about this.
Okay. Okay, let's open the roll on this item. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
That ordinance will be held over for one week for a second reading.
Okay, next.
Mr. President, that takes counsel to general public comment.
Okay, we'll do general public comment. And we'll start out with Mervyn Evans, Harriet Mae Elliott, Dr. Tom Williams. Please come forward.
Mr. President, I believe there's a critical need for drug awareness education, not only with our young people, but with our parents. Far too many parents don't have the ability to identify if their young person has a drug problem. I would certainly hope that you would direct your Director of Parks and Recreation, as well as the Director of Youth Services in this city, to formulate a package, a public education package, and to make that package available through, on our park system, to parents so they can be informed when their children are exhibiting signs of drug addiction. Drug addiction in our young people is the most cancerous item that we have to deal with. It won't cost much money, but it's expensive if we don't attend to it. Now, a lot of you say I compliment your chairman, your president, too much. Let me tell you, this county's in crisis. The highest minority public official is sitting at the county jail right now. Integrity makes a difference. And, Mr. Wesson, you have created a benchmark of governance. You have created a benchmark of a level of professionalism that you and your management team follows. I'm glad to see that we don't have 15 people in the county jail for bribery. And it makes a difference in leadership, and you make a difference in your professional leadership. I want to thank you for that leadership. The public doesn't really appreciate how scandal-free the city of Los Angeles is. Thank you again, Mervyn Evans, a friend of Los Angeles. Mervyn Evans, a candidate for State Assembly in the 62nd District. That's Marina Del Rey, Westchester, Hawthorne, South LA, west... Out there at Venice, on the west side. Thank you.
Mervyn, who has that area now, or is it a new district?
Uh, I'm in a fight with Mr. Bradford.
Oh, Steve Bradford. Okay, I got it.
But he's not from Los Angeles.
No, 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 I got it, I got it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's, uh... Ms. Elliott. Followed by Dr. Tom Williams. I see you there. Go on, Ms. Elliott.
My name is Harriet M. Elliott. I live at 716 South Berendo. My son died 20 years and three days ago. The police told us that an unknown assailant on 27th Street shot into a party on Saturday night. And the... You can check the document of the death report. It's very sketchy. So, it's an unknown assailant. My... I got the autopsy, and there was no alcohol or drugs. My son didn't drink. Why I questioned this... Oh, my son wasn't an outstanding student. However, before he died, his grades came up dramatically. The private investigator that is investigating the case said this very strongly. His... Why I only started questioning about a year and a half ago is because I realized the homeroom teacher said, "I have not one complaint against Obie." Meaning, when the kid... When he was younger, they'd call him the pop-up boy. You know, he'd jump all around, playing around. Also, there were other things. I'm not allowed to call Fred Kuhn. I... In La Puente High School, I was not a brainiac, but Fred Kuhn, K-U-H-N, was. And he went very far. He's higher than a principal in Cupertino School District. And I can't call him and say, "I think he also is a victim of FBI assassination." I was a Mao Zedong. This guy was a Marxist. I was called Mao Zedong. My parents named me in my middle name. And I had that for many years, even up till my son's death. It's on the... They didn't put it on the death report, my middle name. These are political killings. I will never be able to reach Fred Kuhn, because right now, the FBI is surveilling me always.
Thank you. Now, if I could have... I'm calling three names after. Dr. Williams will have Damian Goodman, Eric Romaine, and Rosa Miranda.
Good... Good morning. Dr. Tom Williams, L.A. 32 Neighborhood Council, Land Use Committee Chairperson. My son died a year and five weeks ago from the killer cancer. What do we do about it in the city of L.A.? We have a lot of problems in the city of L.A. One of them is finding a bone marrow match. I would highly recommend that the city council make a resolution sometime soon, so I can let my hair grow back, so that we can have people that are employed by the city of Los Angeles make a decision as to whether they want to be a bone marrow donor or not. Maybe we could get 1,000 people out of the 10,000 eligible employees. I don't know. But let's go for 1,000. Then I can start wearing my hair long again. Okay, there was a vote yesterday regarding call for projects. Transportation. The MTA has $180 million to spread over the county. Since we represent a very large portion of the county, I would hope that we would get a very large portion of that $180 million for transportation needs. Not the big projects, eh, a couple million maybe on each. But one of the problems, last time, two years ago, that we had this call for projects, nobody knew about it, because the council districts didn't feed it down to the general population. But this year, let's have L.A. DOT notify all the neighborhood councils or the LANK that Call for Projects includes any from any stakeholder. So, Call for Projects 2013 is coming due very soon. And the neighborhood councils should be involved.
Thank you, Dr. Williams. Mr. Garcetti, I see your name.
If you don't mind for an introduction, real quick?
Yeah, go right ahead.
Thank you, Mr... 101. I wanted to introduce our class of Government 101 graduates that just are learning about City Hall, how to pass laws.
Let's have them stand.
If we can give them a round of applause and congratulate...
Give them a round of applause.
They're from some of the Mexican state groups that we have here, some of the federations, and have learned some of the basics of government, and want to thank them very much for joining the system, becoming part of this, and learning how to make a difference here at your City Hall. Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay, now, if I could get Damian, followed by Eric. I just saw him. He left. Okay, Eric, you're up. And let's go, Eric, Rosa Miranda, and then Felipe. Just come up and let him pronounce his last name. Eric, I do not want to butcher it. So, Eric, you're up.
And I think Damian Goodman will get up in a moment. Eric Roman from the Bus Riders Union. We want to speak on an item that's already been addressed around Measure J. We want to thank Councilman Englander and Councilman Parks for voting against Measure J, and for the rest of the council, and for the public at large. We want you to know, to be able to see what this... Thank you.
Shh, can we keep it quiet so Eric can speak? Sorry about that, Eric.
We want you to know what Measure J is really about. The proponents of Measure J say it's about jobs. The reality is that four years ago, when the MTA passed Measure R, the predecessor to Measure J, they launched an attack on the working class by cutting half... Cutting a million hours of bus service and raising the fares. An MTA board member told us that she didn't care if people lost their jobs or couldn't find jobs as a result of cut bus service. Measure J is a 60-year boondoggle sales tax that will leave an enormous debt for our children and grandchildren, right? Will basically give an open line of credit to the MTA for crony capitalism, essentially to hand out contracts to the very companies that are filling the campaign coffers of the Measure J campaign, companies like Parsons-Springerhoff, AEG, J&amp;B Realty, Westfield Corporation, CH2M Hill. These are the corporations that are gonna profit handsomely from the open line of credit that Measure J will give to the MTA at the expense, not only of current transit riders, but future transit riders throughout the city. Measure J is not about expansion of transit. If Measure R was about expansion of transit, then why did transit contract since Measure R went into effect when the MTA's budget ballooned? We encourage the public, and we encourage everyone here to vote against Measure J at the polls on November 6th. And we're very saddened that this council was not able to see Measure J for what it was, and we thank those council members who voted against it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Where's Rosa Miranda, who I met this morning, followed by Felipe? Followed... Is Ellis Arkless still here? So, Ellis, you're gonna get your full two minutes now, okay? So, please, uh... And we have our own translator, ready to go. So, Rosa, go right ahead.
I'm a member of the Bus Riders Union. Basically, it's very sad that only two people listen to our public comments. And that you did not give us the opportunity to listen to us. As to why Measure J is a terrible measure for all the bus riders? You guys don't understand what, at each meeting, the MTA states. They state the following. That the ones who always must sacrifice is the working class. Measure R? Promise improvement in the ridership, and also 20% of reduction in the tariffs. But that was basically a lie. They eliminated 1 million of hours of service. And they increased the fares. 30 years more of the Measure R? Now, four years later, they're telling us that they need 30 more years under Measure R? Until 2069. Measure J is immoral. Especially, we need you to support the race that's been oppressed. And don't support the big corporations. That's what we're asking you to please, take more of a leadership role, listen to the community. Don't just vote without listening to the people's needs. Vote no on Measure J on November 6th.
Thank you. Okay. Felipe and Ellis Arkless. And then, I see Damian Goodman is in the room. So, you will speak after Ellis, Damian. Go on, Felipe.
Good morning.
Thank you for giving me this opportunity. I am one more worker in a community as many other workers are. I am only here to give my point of view against... Consider that it's affecting a lot of the worst of the class. Because I feel that that's really hurting us. It's hurting the class that's very, very unprivileged and that earns lower salaries and do not have a lot of jobs. The MTA states that if Measure J passes, it's going to provide more money to create more projects. And that will create and generate more employment in the construction industry? But that will not only affect us workers who do not belong to the construction industry, but it would also affect the people who stay, the homemakers. The laborers, the ones who work at car washes. People like us who work in the restaurants, washing dishes at night. The high cost of the fares. It is very difficult to buy the bus passes, which now cost almost $80. And for a lot of us, that's more than some of us earn on a day in wages. And that is not just a problem. Also, we do not have appropriate service, because we do not... We cannot count on more lines and service on our streets where we take the bus. This is the reason why Measure J is such a bad measure. Because it's really an extension of continuing to hurt and impact negatively to a community and a class that is very, very needy. and a class that is very, very needy.
Por eso es que necesitamos que, por favor, tomen conciencia y piensen en la gente que estamos allá afuera y que necesitamos el apoyo de ustedes.
That's why we please ask you to be aware, think of the people on us who are outside and think before making these decisions.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Okay, I need Ellis and Damian. Damian, you're closer, come on, come on. Let's go. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Ellis Arkless, I'm with the Bus Riders Union. All right, thanks to LA Metro, rail, and Los Angeles, a glorified joke, okay? It is too expensive and detrimental to our environment, okay? LA Metro could save millions if they subtract miles of rail and then list thousands of clean-thru buses. And also, Measure J doesn't really offer any long-term job growth. It only offers jobs in one sector, in construction. What about everybody else? Also, Measure J is full of contradictions with their highway expansion and rail expansion. And also, they're trying to add in all truck lanes, that's only support the seaport industry. So vote no on Measure J.
Damian.
Thank you, Mr. President, for allowing me to speak. I am Damian Goodman of the Crenshaw Subway Coalition and we are proud to stand with our allies from throughout this city and throughout the county opposing the $90 billion sales tax increase that is Measure J. From MacArthur Park to Limerick Park Village, from Boyle Heights to Baldwin Hills, from Highland Park to Hyde, to Highland, to Hyde Park, from the Bus Riders Union to the Beverly Hills Unified School District, we all see this as a bad deal. And allow me to be specific as to why this is a bad deal for South LA. In this measure, there are no protections for bus service. Measure R passed and they cut a million hours of bus service. In the name of improving bus service, they cut a million hours. And on the Crenshaw Line, allow me to be specific, there is not one penny out of $90 billion directed to the Crenshaw Line. Just, just a little over a year ago, 600 African-American leaders, leaders of the clergy, leaders of community development corporations, and our elected leaders stood together and we thanked those council members, Councilmember Parks, Councilmember Perry, Councilmember Garcetti, and you, Council President Herb West, in requesting the Metro add the additional resources of the Crenshaw Line to underground and in Park Mesa Heights and to add the station at Limerick Park Village. They said no. It was a resounding no. It was an embarrassing no. They said they didn't have the money. And now they've put together a $90 billion tax increase and somehow, some way, they still don't have the money. I was born at night, Mr. President, but I was not born last night. This is straight disrespectful. This is $90 billion, greater than the budget of NASA, almost the same as the budget of the state of California. As an Assembly member, which of you would allow a state budget to pass that provided not a penny to the, not a penny to your district? This is a legacy issue. We are getting jacked in South LA and we cannot allow Measure J to pass. We urge you and the voters to vote no. Thank you.
Okay, now we want Sunyong Yang, Joanna Gaspar, and John Walsh, please come forward.
Council President Joanna left.
Okay, well then you go ahead, Ms. Yang.
Sunyong Yang, leader organizer of the Bus Riders Union. I must express that on behalf of half a million bus riders, the multi-community alliance that has been formed over the last month to oppose this corporate boondoggle sales tax extension called Measure J, I am very disappointed in this council. Councilmember Reyes, Councilmember Cárdenas, Councilmember Aralcon, and many of the council members that represent our district, our constituents, did not even blink a second to think about the concerns that's been being raised by working-class people of color. MTA has never proven in the last four years that they give a crap about working-class people when they cut a million hours of service despite $40 billion additional public tax dollars secured in their coffers with the passage of Measure R. Measure J is a twin of that. Measure, the plans that the MTA is pushing, massive rail and highway expansion, is not only going to lead to a massive public health crisis in our communities, but it's also displacing our people within the transit system as well as displacing people within our cities as gentrification and displacement is happening because most of this funding is to benefit powerful real estate developers and the big construction corporations that are making bank right now, like Parsons Brinckerhoff, like AEG. So, the opposition from the community is not unfounded. It's a 30-year extension to 2069. They're asking for more money after $40 billion while they've jacked up the community, have screwed over working-class people of color. And so I'm very disappointed to the council members that represent our district that you did not critically think about this before supporting it today.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. Okay, John Walsh, followed by Dow, Dow House Dude, followed by Gloria, I think this is Castro. Please come forward, Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, and after 30 years of the other transportation taxes, one and a half percent taken out of your, everything you buy, you go, listen to this, liberals, white liberals, fewer people take public transportation now per capita than did in 1985. And you're racist. And I challenge the Bus Riders Union, use the term transit racism. A woman was killed, a gory death, two days, three days ago, at the Hollywood Highlands Station on an escalator. Why didn't she take the elevator? Because the elevator was broken. And why was the elevator broken? And this was in the LA Times a year ago. $1 billion with a B in deferred maintenance. Is, 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 you actually killed that woman. And she was, didn't die for a day. She lay there writhing, writhing and bleeding while a phone call was made to the mayor's office about how to handle it, okay? Now, the board wasn't, didn't find out about this till two days later, after she died, a day after she died, when it was the MTA board. Racist scum! This woman, I asked what was her race. We don't know what her race was. Yet the, the, the MTA is under federal investigation because they don't have on their emergency bulletin boards anything in Spanish. That woman didn't know that the elevator was broken because it isn't in Spanish. How about that, Mr. Reyes? You walked out of the meeting, you were so disgusted at the meeting, and I am not, as a Marxist, gonna get on my knees because the racist, colored skin is darker than mine. You are all garbage.
Thank you, thank you, thank you, John Walsh. Gloria, I mean Dow House Dude, followed by Gloria Castro, I believe it is, Joseph Thomas and Daniel Jones. I'd like to see the people, I've called your name. Go on, Mr. Dude.
Yes, it made me a little bit sick how much time you spend idolizing the Stanley Cup. What is the Stanley Cup about? Violence. You know, let's go break everybody's bones, everybody's teeth, everybody. Hey, I keep telling you about housing and all you have is like, how many billion dollars we lost? How many billion, and everybody's homeless? Let's, why don't you read my book? I've been telling you, read The United World of Free and Clear. It's only a suggestion that we can change things by changing the way we view real estate. You can still build a castle if you're rich, but you don't need to live off the other people all your life. People do not need to struggle on this earth just to have a place to live. We are human beings with a high degree of intelligence and yet the animals all have a shelter and we don't. It is a stupid way to live. Anyway, look at all the time I have. What do I do with the rest of my time? Call everybody stupid again? You know, including myself, for the way we do things? City Attorney, how much do you make a year? Oh, everybody here, how much money do you make? Go to Skid Row, see if you, if anybody will lend you a dollar over there. You know, they don't have the money you do. Where do you get your money? From us, the people that you do not listen to.
Thank you, Mr. Dude. Do we have Ms. Castro? Good. We'll be followed, Joseph Thomas here? Joseph Thomas, well then Daniel Jones, you're next, so if you could get in line. Ms. Castro, the floor is yours.
Yes, thank you so much. As always, it's an honor to address this council. I'm here to discuss Measure R and Measure J, the, basically the measures wrapped in sheep's clothing that are really wolves. I'm here to speak to you as a bus driver, a resident of northeast Los Angeles, and an opponent of the 710 tunnel that you voted against, but will be built with J funds. I can tell that this council has not recently boarded the 81 and the 83 bus, the only two buses that serve my community, at around 5:00 PM. And I invite you to do that, and I wish you had done that before you voted for supporting Measure J. We're packed like sardines. It comes by every, whenever it wants and it drops, it leaves you if you don't fit. I can tell that perhaps you think public transit is coming from the schematic of the train, which is completely different, that comes by 12, every 12 minutes, it's very clean. And honestly, it's third-world conditions on those buses. And these folks, okay, are trying to maintain the jobs they have. These are community college students that are trying to get to classes so they can get better jobs. And meantime, Metro wants to build a first-world type of thing with trains and wants to go into the business of highway construction, which includes this tunnel that's going to decimate El Soreno. Now, Measure J promises to create jobs. These jobs go to a male-dominated industry of engineers and constructions and only provide temporary jobs to unions to those folks. These are corporate jobs. And rather than focusing on the jobs that people have now and that people aspire to obtain, Measure J is just a big gift for developers, for corporate interests, for the foreign companies that are going to come in and do the work that we can do for ourselves because our kids can't get the jobs that America needs to build these things. LA County should have focused on fixing what we have infrastructurally rather than embarking on something that we don't know how much it's going to cost. And I'm still hopefully going to be alive when I'm 99 and this is over.
Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Jones, Daniel Jones, would you quit? Mr. Walsh, you're disturbing the meeting. Okay, Mr. Jones.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. First of all, I'd like to apologize for my comments last week.
Thank you, sir.
I really do. But it's in the law, it's in the Constitution, it's real. Thank you. Um, and second of all, congratulations to the LA Kings. That's a great thing, I was glad I was here to see the real Stanley Cup in person. Thank you very much for that. And I also like to acknowledge and thank you for starting up the two clocks across the street and in the, you know, the clocks, they're, my clocks are working now, thank you very much, I appreciate that. I'm sorry I'm late, I just didn't use it this morning. Does anybody understand what a moral imperative is? That's when we, the people, we're not going to say anymore to you people.
Mr. President, this is not a question-and-answer period, so he doesn't have anything to add.
No, but it's his time, it's your time, you can do whatever you want to do as long as you don't get undressed.
I'm not getting undressed.
Okay then, just, you can stand there, do whatever you want. Yes, Mr. Zine.
Well, the speaker has a period of time, one minute, two minutes, whatever, to speak. If they're not speaking, it's not just to sit there and be in front of the microphone if they're not going to speak.
And you're correct, but this is the last speaker of the day and I will give Mr. Jones on this occasion his time. So if you could show me.
So a moment of silence.
I'm all done being silent.
Mr. Walsh, you are disrupting the council meeting.
I'm a man of honor as much as I can be every day in my life. At least I had the honor, courage, and respect, and the gall, tenacity, and wherewithal to come in here and advise you of what you're doing wrong first. I have captured on behalf of the people of Los Angeles the moral high ground.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jones. Okay, Madam Clerk, is there any more business before this body?
Mr. President, I believe, uh, Mr. Corretts.
Yes, I'd just like to ask that Item 9 go forthwith.
If, anything within reason for you, Mr. Corretts.
Thank you.
So we will send that forthwith. Okay, Madam Clerk, what's, what's, what's left?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
Consider them posted and referred. Announcements, Ms. Zine.
Saturday, tomorrow, Topanga Community Police Station is going to have a community project to help spruce up the station, the vegetation. They're going to go to a new environment with the vegetation. Public's invited to come, help participate. Mr. Englander will be there with his Levi's helping to till the soil. That's tomorrow, starting at 9:00 at the Topanga Police Station, that is on, off Canoga, just north of Roscoe. And also tomorrow, Saturday, October 20th, Woodland Hills Tarzana Chamber of Commerce, 13th Annual Family Fall Festival, 10 to 4 in Warner Center, Warner Center Park. Public's invited to come and participate. And also, let me see what else we have here on the agenda for the next day. Sunday, we have, that's it for my district, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Select invite Northeast to a committee cleanup in Cypress Park, 8:30 in the morning on Alice in Cypress. I'll be tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Mr. Labange.
A busy day on Sunday with the Sherman Oaks Fair and Ventura Boulevard, great day. And also, K-Earth 101 celebrating their 40th anniversary has a great concert. Universal City Gifts at Amphitheater, which will be fun for all. Be a great weekend to come and enjoy. And lastly, Travel Town. The Travel Town Train Museum is a depot day. Families, young and old alike are welcome in Griffith Park. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any more, Mr. Englander.
Yes, tonight, I welcome everybody to come to the annual pasta dinner at the Greek Church at 5:00 for solid supporters of law enforcement at Devonshire. It's a great family fun where we have pasta and pizza, we get 500 or 600 people show up. So I'll challenge our Italian member to show up and come out and have some pasta at the Greek Church.
Thank you. I'm going to have Mr. Dennis Zine, who's been very supportive of the Taste of Soul, make the announcement about tomorrow.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. I didn't want to tread on your territory or my colleague's.
No, but you're so eloquent, I would like to have you.
Thank you very much. So, the public's invited, Taste of Soul, Crenshaw Boulevard, it's a wonderful event. Everyone's invited to come out. It'll be a beautiful day, the Taste of Soul, Crenshaw Boulevard, I will be there. There's a wonderful community turnout and the public's invited. A lot of things happening, the weather will be great, and I'm sure we'll see many of the Angelenos participating in the great, great event, musicians, food, et cetera. Taste of Soul tomorrow, Crenshaw Boulevard, come on out and have a good time.
Yes, Mr. Zine, and it's been expanded. I believe we had over 100,000 people attend last year. It is a very special event. Any other announcements? Mr. Paul Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Members, tomorrow morning, beginning at 9:00 AM at Notre Dame High School, the Connor Lynch Foundation and the Automobile Club will be jointly hosting a teen driver safety fair as part of the kickoff of National Teen Driving Safety Week. And the public is welcome to join us there, beginning at 9:00 AM. There will be a number of sessions dealing with law enforcement, safe driving techniques, driving sober and so on. So, be a good event. Thank you, Mr. Labange, for including us in the fourth council district.
Thank you very much, Mr. Krikorian. Connor Lynch was a great Notre Dame High School student who tragically was hit by a car during a cross-country practice. And Mr. Corretts, you were so helpful in getting them off in the right way and now I'm proud to help him as well. Thank you.
Thank you. And we've been joined by our newest Public Works Commissioner, Capri Maddox came by. So, Capri, welcome. Any other announcements? Okay, could everyone in the council chambers please rise for adjourning motions? And I'm going to, members, if you indulge me, go first because we have a daughter of this individual with us today and his wife. this individual with us today and his wife. You hear conflicting opinions where it relates to the city attorney's office. Some good, some not so good. Members, I have to say to you that the relationship that my office has with them has been a very, very special relationship, and I think they have done anything, just about anything, within reason to try to assist me. So today, I want to adjourn in the memory of one of their own, Andrew Nocas, who everybody lovingly referred to as Andy. He was born in February in 1941, and his parents moved to central L.A. where he attended high school at George Washington High. He obviously was a very, very bright man because he got his undergraduate degree from Stanford and his law degree from Stanford. He spent five years in the Army as a reserve judge, in the Reserve Judge Advocate Corps. He was in private practice before he joined the city attorney's office in May of 2000. The minute he came to the city attorney's office, he was recognized as an excellent lawyer and a brilliant litigator. And he was recognized with membership in the American Board of Trial Advocates. He was the chairman of the Los Angeles County Bar Association's litigation section. And I could go on and on, and it's my understanding from our city attorney that I mispronounced his last name, and I apologize for that. Personally, I never had the opportunity to meet him, but there was a project in our office, to say the least, was a very, very vexing problem. And we tried this way and that way. We spent years trying to get this project done. When we were able to get in front of Andy, or when my staff was able to get in front of Andy, within a short period of time, he got a handle on this project. And if you speak to the members of my staff, they will describe Andy as a rock star. That is the term that they use. This problem that I had does not exist anymore. He helped us move forward with a project that's going to bring a Korean-American museum to the Koreatown area. And the community's very excited about that. And I want to let whoever is listening know that that would not have occurred if it wasn't for this very creative thinker. We have his wife, Sandy, with us today, and his daughter, Jana. He was taken away from us too soon. And he's, has a big family and will be missed by all of them, but I think the, the family that will miss him almost as much as his blood family will be the city attorney's family. And so with that said, I want to make sure we adjourn in the honor of this very good and decent man. And even though it is our policy, I will restate it for this adjourning motion. All members will be on this motion. Mr. Labange?
Just to add to you, Mr. President, and to the Nocas family, these pillars are what city attorneys are. They don't cut ribbons. They don't get to go out and make good speeches. They don't get to have fun. They got to be very smart, be very true. If the pillars aren't strong, the building collapses. Without their advice and knowledge like your husband gave us, we may not be on the course, just as Mr. Westen articulated. So, I thank you, and it's sad when anyone amongst us goes, and goes too soon. So I wanted to express that to your husband.
Other adjourning motions. Mr. Paul Krikorian.
Thank you very much, Mr. Westen. I'd ask that the council adjourn this meeting in memory of his beatitude Archbishop Torcom Manugian, who for over two decades was the patriarch of the Armenian Church in Jerusalem. As many of you know, Jerusalem is divided into, into sections. The Armenian quarter of Jerusalem is one of the most historic and important places on the globe in Christianity. And Archbishop Manugian was the patriarch of that area for over two decades. He was born in 1919 in Iraq, where his parents had escaped the Armenian genocide. He was ordained a priest in the Armenian Church in 1939 and served since then in service to the church. He spent most of his life in the United States and was the primate of the Western Diocese of the Armenian Church right here in Los Angeles, before going on to take leadership of the Eastern Diocese and then moving on to Jerusalem. As a survivor of religious and ethnic persecution himself, he was an outspoken champion of human rights for all. His energetic and confident leadership was especially vital in 1988 after the Armenian earthquake, when the Eastern Diocese, of which he was the spiritual leader, became a focal point for all of the outpouring of humanitarian relief that went into that country from around the world. In 1990, he became the 96th Armenian patriarch of Jerusalem, and he was instrumental in revitalizing the patriarch, preserving and extending its age-old role for over two, well, almost two millennium as a center for learning, pilgrimage, and scholarship for the Armenian Church. He was also an expert on Armenian sacred music and was a poet of great distinction, and he even completed an Armenian translation of the sonnets of Shakespeare. I had an opportunity to meet Archbishop Manugian when I was in Jerusalem. He is a spiritual leader that's meaningful to Armenians everywhere in the world, and he will certainly be greatly missed, but his legacy will, will last forever. His beatitude will be interred at the patriarchal cemetery in Jerusalem along with all of the other great Armenian churchmen of that area over the past ages on Monday, October 22nd. May he rest in peace, and I ask that we adjourn in his memory.
And as an aside, Mr. Krikorian, I was just informed that our own Avak, that his father was his secretary.
Oh.
Is that correct, Avak? Yeah, yeah. Okay, so it just shows the older we get, how the world gets closer, it shrinks. Other adjourning motions. Seeing none, members, this council meeting is adjourned.